We will now officially call to order our City Council Evening Community Meeting. If our clerk will please call the roll.
Councilmember Scott Benson. Councilmember Fred Durhal the 3rd.
Present.
Councilmember Letitia Johnson. Councilmember Gabrielle Santiago Romero.
Present.
Councilmember Mary Waters.
Present.
Councilmember Angela Whitfield Callaway.
Present.
Councilmember Coleman Young the 2nd.
Councilmember Young did indicate that he will not be present this evening.
The clerk will so know.
Thank you.
Council President Pro Tem James Tate. Council President Mary Sheffield.
Present.
Madam President, there is a call.
Alright, there being a call, we are officially in session and we will start off with community grounding. And that will be led by Rosebud Schneider. You can please come join us here at the microphone.
Greetings, my name is Rosebud Bear Schneider. I spoke to you in my native language, I'm Anishnabe. I grew up here in southwest Detroit. My dad's family comes, is Anishnabe and they came from northern Wisconsin. And my mother's family is Mexico, is from Mexico and Apache and P'at'acha people. And they came from Mexico to Detroit. Both sets of grandparents worked for the automotive industry. My mother was born right at Clark Street in 75. So very deep roots in southwest Detroit. I have lived and worked in Detroit my whole life. I'm currently the co-director at Keep Growing Detroit. I was invited by Councilmember Santiago Romero to help kick off this evening today by doing the community grounding. And my way of doing that is explaining to you my roots to this land and what, and my connection to this space. It's a real honor to be here with you all today. I think it's really important work that we all do together, whatever brought you here today. I encourage you all to think about the ways that we intersect and think about the ways that we have in common. That being the water and the land and each other. And really what it comes down to it is caring for those things so we can care for each other. So I, on the, you know, on the heels of Indigenous Peoples Day, I implore you all to think about the Indigenous folks in your community that work alongside you, that very much need your support and your solidarity and all of the things that we do together. Ni gwich, thank you.
Alright, thank you so much for that. And President Pro Tem Tate has joined us and we will move on now to Father Tim McCabe, who is with us and who will do a invocation and a welcome in this beautiful facility here. We are honored to be here and glad that you allowed us to host this evening. So we will turn it over to Father Tom McCabe.
It's a privilege for us to host this, so thank you for allowing us to do that. Let's take a moment to thank God for the blessings of our lives. Almighty God, we come before you this evening with grateful hearts. We thank you for the privilege and the honor to live and work in this great American city. Almighty God, we know that you are a God of many names, that there are many religions and many ways that lead to you. But for those great religions and for those who know you, we know that you are a God of love, God of mercy, God of compassion. And we know that you ask us to be the same. Lord, we ask you to bless all the public servants who are here this evening, who have answered your call to serve this city and its citizens. We ask you, Lord, to send your blessing upon them. Show them your care, grant them your wisdom, grant them good discernment, and keep them safe and protected as they serve this great city. Lord, finally, we ask you, as we head towards Election Day in a few weeks, that you stay close to us, that you save our democracy, keep it safe from fascism and bigotry and hatred. Help us, Lord, as your people, to know your will and to carry that out. We pray these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Well, just a quick welcome to all of you who are here this evening. You are sitting in a building that has been nine years in the making. We have, the Pope Francis Center runs a day center in downtown Detroit. It's at St. Peter and Paul. We offer showers and laundry and nutritious meals, some medical and dental. We care for those who are experiencing homelessness, but it is, it is in this building, after nine years of work and a lot of generous support, that we will begin the process of being transformational and helping people heal from the trauma that has caused their homelessness and help them to live and reach their potential, their God-given potential to live independently as possible. So if you haven't been here before, please come back and come for a tour. You're only seeing one part. This is our gymnasium, obviously, where our guests can recreate, but also the neighborhood folks can use this and shoot hoops when they need to. It also will function as a place during weather emergencies where people can shelter in place. We have a full medical clinic on that side of the building where we offer full medical and dental care in a state-of-the-art facility with doctors and nurses that care for not only folks that are homeless, but anyone in the neighborhood that needs it regardless of their income levels. It's free to all who need medical care. We have a residential facility on that side of the building, on the other side of the dining room, where we have 40 studio apartments where folks are beginning to come into our building and begin the process of healing and stabilization, where they're receiving the support that they need, really. So this has been a long time coming. We brought our first cohort in a couple of weeks ago and we're thrilled to be able to begin this process. And we owe a debt of gratitude to the City Council who helped to make this happen. So thank you, Council President, Councilmember Santiago Romero, and all of you who have been a part of this, this mission to end chronic homelessness in our city. Thank you.
Alright, thank you so much, Father Tim McCabe. And we so appreciate you and the work that you do. The Pope Francis Center has truly been a staple in this city. And so we honor you, we appreciate you, and you have consistently been a voice to end homelessness in our community. So we appreciate you, Father Tim McCabe, for what you do. Alright, we will move now to our recognition of department staff. Any City of Detroit department staffs that are here with us, please stand at this time to be recognized. Alright, and we will do introductions as we normally do, starting on my left. Alright, that looks like everyone, again, we thank all of our City of Detroit departments for being here. Let's give them another round of applause, taking the time to be here. And we will now move to recognition of City Council staff. We do ask that you hold your applause to the end. And we will start with Councilmember Durhal's staff. Alright, Councilmember Santiago Romero. Councilmember Coleman Young's staff. Council President Sheffield's staff. Council President Pro Tem Tate's staff. We got someone today, alright. Councilmember, yeah, Councilmember-at-large, Mary Waters' staff. Councilmember Callaway's team. And Councilmember Benson's team. Councilmember Johnson's team. Alright, and we will save Councilmember Santiago Romero's staff, because she's going to introduce them, and we can give all of our council staff now a round of applause. Alright, without further ado, we would turn it over to District 6 Councilmember, Councilmember Santiago Romero.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Look, the Lions are winning, right? The Tigers did great. We should feel good. And I'm so excited that you guys are here. Thank you so much for being here, to the different departments that are here to share information. Thank you, Rosebud, for grounding us and reminding us where we're coming from and why we're here. And thank you, Father Tim, for your prayers. And to all of my colleagues that are here, we do have a brief presentation for everyone. Would like to share with folks what we've been up to and also who does the work in our office. So I would like to turn the next page to briefly introduce you guys to the team, if you have not already met them. I have an incredible team of dedicated staff that work so incredibly hard for you, that love our city deeply. And I'm gonna ask that they raise their hand as I, as I name them out, but we've got Kristin Diag, my Chief of Staff, Vanessa Johnson, our Executive Office Manager, Ray Duncan, my Policy Advisor, TJ Rogers, Communication and Engagement Manager, Adar Ronke, EB Ronke, my Policy Analyst, Joell Reyes-Clan, our Community and Resident Services Manager, and Trish Jackson, Patricia Jackson, my Community Liaison. If you could please give them all a round of applause. I see a lot of leaders here that work very closely with my team, so I am incredibly grateful for them and the work that they do. Not pictured on the screen, we have hired eight community outreach specialists who are right now canvassing the district. Every summer, we knock on doors with GDYT. This year, we decided to shift and to hire eight outreach specialists to teach them about the importance of doing health checks on doors, on sharing information with folks, and also gathering feedback, gathering data. Our outreach specialists are identifying where there's buildings that are missing, that are burned, to let me know what needs to be torn down or what can be invested in. So all that, all the things that we do are very intentional. And this program, along with the many things that we do, we hope really helping enhance all of our leadership and collaboration. Next, just quickly, some policy updates that we're working on. Thank you so much to everyone that helped us organize for the fugitive dust ordinance. We were able to pass this earlier this year. I've been able to hear from Bseed and under, and other industries that have been impacted by the ordinance, that it's being, it's being enforced. It is not causing the kind of rift that it was gonna cause industry. They are able to follow and, and quite frankly, it's something that, that is good for everyone. So if you see any industry that is producing fugitive dust, please let us know. You know how to contact our office, but that has been implemented and is currently being enforced. We also passed the healthcare facilities ordinance recently. What this does is it allows anyone that is going to a healthcare facility to do so, quite frankly, free from harassment. I experienced going to one of our healthcare clinics, not to receive any services, actually to just speak with the director from the clinic. And as I was walking to the clinic, men came up to me, there's a white man that came up to me telling me not to have an abortion, to save my baby, that he was there to save me. And I was, I'm not pregnant, I wasn't there for a service. And quite frankly, he should be able to say what he wants at a distance without impacting people's ability to go into a clinic. So we passed this to allow for space for you to, if, if, if you wanna share the word of the Lord, please do so, but allow people to walk into the clinic safely. So we got that passed. And in the progress right now, things that we're working on, we are working on a truck route ordinance to establish routes where trucks can drive on and be off. Many of us in southwest Detroit or in District 4, around industry, we have a lot of trucks coming in and out of our residential areas. So we're working with the administration right now to set a truck route in southwest Detroit. But my goal is to have something across the city. We know that we need truck routes across the city, so that's our next goal and the purpose of the truck route ordinance. We are looking to establish a language access ordinance. Currently, the city has language access that is through, it's passed through an executive order from the mayor's office. We want to codify this to ensure that we have language access through every department. So we're working on this now with our Immigration Task Force. We are also working on a historic review ordinance. So many people, if you, if you read the news, you might have seen us fight demolition or two in the past. And we would like to pass an ordinance that would allow a historic review of properties that have historic significance to potentially save them to be developed. If we can't save them, if they're too far off, it's okay, we can let them go. But I believe that Detroit has beautiful historic property that is sound, and if we can save it, we would like to do so. And the last thing that I'll share is, we are working on an outdoor dining ordinance. When COVID happened, many restaurants started to do their work outside. We don't have policies to do that, so we're gonna just codify that policy as well, to set up a process for restaurants to be able to have outdoor dining at their establishments. So that is a little bit of what we're working on now. There is so much more that we're doing, but we don't have that much time. And we're gonna show a lot more of that we've done in a little bit. But we know in my office that we cannot do these things alone, so would like to shift over now to share some thank you, some gratitude, some Spirit of Detroit awards, to ensure that folks get the flowers that they deserve. And I will first hit it off to my award for Rosebud Schneider. So Rosebud is incredible, and we just heard her ground us here, but Rosebud has done so much for the city, and I would just like to share a little bit of the work that she's done for us. So Rosebud is enrolled, is an enrolled citizen of Lak'kru'ray, band of Lake Superior Chippewa Indians, recognized, she's a recognized ascendant of Lak'du'fulimbu, band of Lake Superior Chippewas, an eastern Shawnee tribe of Oklahoma, and pure P'acha people. She was born and raised in southwest Detroit. She is a farmer, producer, and community organizer. Her involvement with Indigenous People Sovereignty works spans over 15 years, first as a breastfeeding educator and community healthcare worker and home visitor with Healthy Starts and WIC, my brother was a WIC baby, so thank you for doing that. And then as a farmer and nutrition educator with the Sacred Roots Food Sovereignty Project in Detroit. She also expanded her roots throughout the, throughout the city's agriculture network as a farmer and former board member of Keep Growing Detroit, and completed MSU's Organic Farmers Training Program in 2017. She has spent three seasons as the Market Manager, Farmer, and Food Producer of Minion, I am pronouncing this very wrong, Rosebud, for Minogin. Oh, I did, thank you. Minogin and Zim, Zimijuan, a tribe, a tribally-owned Indigenous food hub located in Mackinac City. She is the co-director in education and engagement, she's the co-director of education and engagement of Keep Growing Detroit. As an Anishnabe farmer and producer here in the community, she continues to provide traditional foods across Turtle Island. Rosebud remains dedicated to supporting the health and wellness of our community by educating on the importance of revitalizing Indigenous foodways. And last night, I had the pleasure of joining a beautiful dinner at Keep Growing Detroit, where Rosebud, along with another chef, provided a beautiful dinner, all with Indigenous Detroit's Michigan produce and protein. We had some salmon. So thank you so much. For this and so much more, it is my honor to present Rosebud with the Spirit of Detroit Award, if you wouldn't mind joining me. Thank you, everyone. I have just one more piece of business before I turn it over to our media team to share what we've been up to this year. But not only do we really care and are grateful for our community members, community leaders, we are also indebted to city staff. So the City of Detroit's Media Services Department, the Total Copy Center provides high-volume copying services for city departments and our offices. Materials provided include training manuals, flyers, brochures, reports, certificates, and so many other items. Some of the major print requests come from the budget office, our council offices, the police departments, Public Works, Alta Pro, Human Resources, so many more. Ultimately, this department gets around 500,000 requests a year for prints. While the work may not be glamorous, we know the importance of making sure that work is accessible to everyone across the city. So we are so incredibly thankful for two staff at the Total Copy Center who are always there for us to make sure that we're printing things on time, that we're getting resources out to our community. So thank you so much to Ms. Patricia Trammell and Teresa Trammell for the work that you've done for our city. If you both wouldn't mind joining me up here, just for folks to know, Patricia has been working with the city for over 27 years, and Teresa, over 14. So thank you both so much. Thank you again. I, we print a lot of things in our office, so when I ask my staff, who should we give kudos to and roses to, they instantly thought of, of Pat and Teresa. So thank you so much for the work that you do for us. That is it for me, folks. What I'm gonna do now is turn it over to our media team. Thank you again for the work that was done on this video, to showcase a little bit of the work that we've done so far.
Good evening, Detroit, and hello, District 6. My name is Gabrielle Santiago Romero, and I'm your proud Detroit City Council member. I am an immigrant and a lifelong Detroiter, who has called this community home since I was two years old. As a community organizer and a social worker, I'm always thinking about how we can enhance and build vibrant, thriving communities for all of us. During this year's budget cycle, I secured $1 million to expand shelter services and operations, $100,000 for Fort Street Bridge Park in 4217, and $600,000 to launch the nurse navigation program for non-emergency health services and preventative care. I also secured $1.2 million for street scrape improvements along West Warren Avenue, and $1.4 million for a school street project in 4217. Both of these are moving forward into the fall and into 2025.
Real humble people, we only do what we just love to do, and that's help people. Knowing that we have a City Council member, it was just really wonderful to know that they cared enough about the people.
While proud of these strides, I know many more investments are needed to develop our neighborhoods. Legislatively, this year, I passed my first major law, the Fugitive Dust Ordinance, which will help keep our air clean and ensure businesses are being good neighbors. When I think back on all we have accomplished and what's to come, I am reminded of the importance of community and the power of our people. From standing with our union siblings in the auto and casino industries, to becoming the first major US city to call for a ceasefire in Gaza, we have a lot to be proud of. These accomplishments were and are only possible because of you and our partnerships. I believe in a collaborative government, one that listens to its constituents and works hand-in-hand for the development of our neighborhoods. In that spirit, my team and I are always looking for opportunities to connect with the community to strengthen relationships and build collective power. We hold regular community meetings, coffee hours, and trainings. I often visit with our seniors, our students, and our youth. My team and I attend block club meetings, neighborhood association, and business association meetings. We do this because increased transparency enhances public trust, which then facilitates working collaboratively alongside you to implement proactive solutions and secure necessary investments rooted in equity, access, and opportunity. If I've learned anything in the last three years as your council member, is that we can do big things together. So thank you for trusting me to serve you. Thank you for holding me accountable, and thank you for working alongside me. I love District 6 deeply, and I love all of you. Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for our partnerships, and most of all, thank you for leading with love with us.
Thank you, everyone, for the work that you've done with us this year. We have so much more to do. That is it from us. Thank you, Madam President.
Alright, let's give our City Council member in District 6 a round of applause for all the great work that she's doing, and her staff as well. And Councilmember Benson has joined us. And Member Johnson, sorry about that. Member Johnson as well. Alright, we will proceed with our agenda. We are moving now to our citizens' concerns. These are residents that have called in advance, so they will have four minutes for public comments. And we will start with Mr. Cunningham. Is he here in person? Virtual? Okay, we will turn it over to him virtually. I just want people to know, I do have to step out early, and so President Pro Tem Tate will take over the seat when I do have to depart. Mr. Cunningham?
That number was made so you can remember it. And on Facebook, Expensive Vehicle Repairs, three words. Click people and put in expensive vehicle repaired, and you'll see my page. Thank you for your prayers, thank you for your concerns. The ride-along that we had yesterday was really, really, really good. He got to see the good, the bad, and talk to the people, the ugly. But I think, I think it was pretty good. I thank Council President for riding the coaches, and the other councilpersons that have or are going to. The Honorable Councilwoman Gabrielle Santiago Romero, she rode the coaches. I wanted to come in physically today, but I had some back and leg pain, and so I figured I'd come home and do it from the crib, and that's what I am doing. This upcoming, on the 17th, I believe, there's a DDOT meeting. You can go to their Facebook page, which is Detroit Department of Transportation, spelled all the way out, and the links and the ID numbers and everything are available on their site. There's gonna be a lot of service changes in January, and that's what this meeting is in regards to. Things that I noticed while on the coaches, the seats were, some of the, on the, some of the seats were very nasty. The plastic seats on the other coaches usually are easier to keep clean. But I had people complaining about the seats, and it was like a black-brown streak in the very back of the seats, on the bottom. DDOT has made mighty, mighty strides in hiring. Now the problem is, the vehicles need to be repaired and they need more mechanics. So after all these years of advocacy, in regards to public transportation, I have to fight the filling. the feeling that it's on purpose neglected the bus system. So it's gentrification on steroids. I tell my colleagues all the time, I say, you know, it's like they wanted to fail, to make it uncomfortable, to get certain demographics, like poor folks like myself, out of here. Make it uncomfortable. The Q line is free, the people mover is free. And I have to fight that thought. Conspiracy theory, I have to fight that thought, that the high-ups, they wanted to feel, to make it, it's like a big, huge part of the recipe for gentrification, a bad transit system. I want to thank Councilwoman Waters for the six cases of hand warmers. Thank you so much. I put it on my social media, so some folks might email you, but I thank you. I thank you, Councilman Durhall, for the $130 donation. I greatly appreciate that. I did buy some more bus tickets today. I want to thank the Council President for her bus tickets that she donated. This council is different than many times. I don't really get kind things or good things or hear good things. It's hard for me to accept that in general in life. I don't know why it's that way. When I send out love, I get not-so-good back. But I'm continuing to be me, continue to help others, and keep you all in prayer, and please keep me in prayer at my mom's, at the rivers of Grosse Pointe, Sherona Reliance. Thank you so much.
Thank you as well, Brother Cunningham. And we will now cut off public comment. And our next speaker, who has called in advance, is Mr. Renard Monchunsky. He will have four minutes. Mr. Monchunsky, are you available, sir?
Good evening. Can I be heard by the city council and community?
Yes.
All right, good evening. Thank you. My name is Renard Monchunsky. I'm a proud resident of District Six, and I proudly organize with Detroit People's Platform as a transit justice organizer since 2015, but I'm a lifelong bus rider. I grew up along Lauderdale School Craft and used the Grand River to get to it from high school. So many years later, I've noticed that, you know, I want to agree with some of the sentiments that Cunningham has said about, it just feels like the DDOT is intentionally being under-resourced and funded. In the conversations with the directors, you know, that's not their purview to do the budget, but DDOT has been invested in less than $200 million over these three terms of this current mayor. And I think what the budget is calling for nearly that, $189 million. But if we are going to execute this really awesome plan that we put together with the department since 2020 called DDOT Reimagine, this city has to be extremely serious about how it budgets for its departments. DDOT is not just a line item, it is not just an expense, and it's not a burden. It is a crucial public service to the city. It is crucial to the economic redevelopment of this city, though it has not been factored in, as Cunningham says, with free fares for the Q line and also for the people mover that serves an extremely limited area. What is going to keep people in this town is a reliable bus transportation system, 10 to 15-minute frequency, not just for your main routes, which the department is struggling to do. I get complaints about Grand River, Grashit, and other previously reliable routes like Michigan Avenue, which have been slacked. Even Wilbert at nighttime is precarious after 7 o'clock or 8 o'clock. Believe it or not, people are not just doing business between peak hours of when transit is more widely available. My area in Midtown, I'm covered by many routes, but if you're relying on the Plymouth route, for example, your experience with DDOT is every single day almost miserable because there's buses that are just not coming on time. 70% on-time performance is not acceptable for a city of this size as well. So I behoove this council to actually consider and think about the budget proposals that is being sent to you. But remember that you have power of the purse. You are entrusted with the treasury that of the dollars we send to you, you get to make that voice through us as residents, as we elect you, to demand better for our bus system. It is an amazing potential. It has improved over the years due to the work of us advocates and organizers and bus riders who care about the system and rely on it for our day-to-day transportation needs, like every single day, even the weekends as well. I can't intrigue this council enough to, you know, when you get this mayor or budget, think about the investments that this department needs. Think about the fact that we need to attract more mechanics as well, too. We've made really good strides. This council itself has really pushed the administration to have more funding and through your resolutions. So I don't want to say that nothing has been done. However, we gotta push this needle and consider DDOT, Detroit Department of Transportation, one of the economic development vehicles that is going to grow the city, maintain residents, and prevent what Cunningham is feeling and what all of us are seeing: gentrification on wheels, where only certain conveyances are getting invested in and they're considered as economic development, but DDOT is left outweighed. Our residents deserve better than 30-minute waits. Our residents deserve just much better than this austere budgets that we've been getting for year over year. Invest in DDOT. Thank you.
And thank you. We also have Mr. D'Amico Williams, who called in early for his four minutes and comments. Mr. D'Amico Williams, are you available?
Yes, I am. Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, hi. Good evening. My name is D'Amico Williams, and I am the Chief Executive Director of Hyatt Detroit. We're a 503 water rights organization that helps people with their water bills, advocate for clean water and affordable, accessible water. And I called with an update. Earlier today, this morning, you've heard from Richard Clay about the tremendous opportunities and turnarounds of water affordability and making water more accessible to the residents of the city of Detroit. First of all, I want to thank the Water and Sewerage Department, its team, and its leadership over the past few years that have worked with our organization to be the voice of policy, advocacy for the citizens and residents to keep access to clean, running water. I also like to say thank you, council, for doing whatever you can in your powers of authority to make sure that water is accessible and affordable in the city of Detroit. Over the years, we have been through a bankruptcy that has shut off a lot of water to citizens that are still, that have lived here, but also that have now have, you know, unfortunately had to leave the city because of unaffordability. And once you fall behind on one bill, it happens to all of us that it's harder to catch up. And many people are still on access to water. The thing is, is that we want to make sure that everyone in the city of Detroit have access to their water service being on this winter. So if they call Wayne Metro and they also call the advocacy organizations to make sure that their water is still on, that they're on the Lifeline Plan and the Easy Pay Program that it just launched, 60,000 inquiries into that program and people have signed up. This is amazing. This is what we want. This is finally what we've achieved. And thank you to all the water advocates, the people that work hard around policy in the city of Detroit every single day that comes to this body. And teamwork makes the dream work. Now we have to move forward. Now we have to go to the higher lands of the mountain of making sure that all of our... We never go through this again. American cities are going through crises of people having their water shut off and not being able to afford it. DTE is under the same thing. I could speak to the same thing of utilities in the city of Detroit. But we want to make sure that the advocacy of people having access to their water is that it's available, that they don't have to go... Now, there's a recertification process for the Lifeline Plan, and it's due by October 31st, so you need to call Wayne Metro. And anybody on the Lifeline Plan getting the $18 water bill, $45 to $50 million debt cleared of the city of Detroit. Water amnesty debt was cleared off the Lifeline, off the moratorium, and also the pandemic. So Detroiters have been blessed and lucky every holiday, every Christmas, to have clean, running water in their homes. All you have to do is reach out. Now, again, applause to the Water Department, applause to the city of Detroit, and also applause to the water activists and the people, the residents, and longtime Detroiters that have continued to press that water is an affordable human right, it is a safe and clean human right, it is also a right to life, and it is also a right to live in the city of Detroit where we're accessed by the freshest water in the world. That's the Detroit River and the Great Lakes. Thank you for taking my comment.
Thank you. And our next speaker, and she is here in person, is Ms. Irma Leepard. Thank you for joining us. You have four minutes. The floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. So, yes, my name's Irma Leepard. I am a Great Lakes clean water advocate and community organizer. Born and raised in Detroit District 3, currently a 30-plus resident in District 1, but I have to say I have big love for the entire city. I'm grateful that last week I was present during a conversation about water infrastructure that was extraordinary. But since that time, in just one week, I've been in other conversations involving designing large-scale... Someone contacted me about designing a large-scale green infrastructure project in Detroit, funding for GI projects, climate resiliency, climate migration, wetlands protection, green roofs, stormwater harvesting using rain barrels and cisterns, and stormwater capture from roads via green streets and green stormwater infrastructure in the right-of-way. So green infrastructure projects provide multiple benefits, including infiltrating stormwater, reducing flooding, reducing sewer overflows, improving air and water quality, increasing biodiversity, and providing nearby nature experiences. I'm happy to share that the Department of Public Works, who I think is represented here today, has very closely completed a GSI and a right-of-way project on Lhasa Road by the Old Redford, in the Old Redford community, and it's just about complete. In your packets, I've provided before and after pictures to share this really noteworthy transformation. It really is beautiful to me, the before and after of what we can do to both, you know, beautify a community but also capture stormwater. And though that picture is a rendering that you have, it closely aligns what it actually looks like. I went today to take another picture, but they still had some of the construction barrels. But in the spring, if you take a chance to go to Sweet Potato Sensations or something over there, take a look at it, it's gonna be lovely. As our city's policymaking body, your support of green and sustainable policies is essential in helping the city implement more nature-based solutions and green infrastructure. Your actions will help us become a more resilient city that can withstand and bounce back more quickly from the harsh impacts of climate change like what we've seen this week down in Florida. But also, a complete streets policy, a complete green streets policy will be a key tool in our resiliency toolkit, and I thank you, Councilman Johnson, for working on that. Runoff from roads is a major contributor to stormwater pollution and flooding, so dealing with it is crucial. Lastly, I've shared some information. You have packets that's got, for your respective district, stormwater impacts, packet on green streets, what is it actually, the Lhasa Road project, and I have additional information I need to drop off at your offices either this week or next. And it will have a rain garden guide and a bailout book that features several Great Lakes restoration initiative projects on the island. I'll be in DC the 1st of November advocating there with our federal legislators on continuing funding for the GLRI projects. There's just a lot going on in our city to protect our water, our water resources, and you are a major part of that. Also, I'd like to acknowledge that I chair the Water and Green Infrastructure Committee of the Green Task Force under Councilman Benson. And today, we heard from an excellent presentation from National Wildlife Federation, talked about their Sacred Grounds Program. They, Friends of the Rouge and Sierra Club, just got funded to do 10 more churches next year and implementing large-scale green infrastructure. So we're doing it, and thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to speak today.
Thank you. Thank you for your advocacy, and thank you for providing us with this information as well. Very much appreciate it. Our final resident who called in in advance, he is here as well, Mr. Minister, excuse me, Eric Blunt. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Honorable City Council, I am Minister Eric Blunt, a lifelong Detroit-er, speaking on behalf of the Coalition for Police Transparency and Accountability. When a member of our community is killed or harmed by the police, it raises serious concerns and questions. And if a picture is worth 1,000 words, then a video is priceless. So the timely release of video footage and related documents in a police officer's use of force is why we are here. Examples of transparency. Our research has led us to the Chicago model of what transparency and accountability can look like here in Detroit. Chicago uses an open portal to document the timely release of all content required in their ordinance or law. The Open Portal Tool uniquely identifies each use of force with a log number, and the site includes a search engine and dropdown menus. All of these features allow a user to quickly retrieve data, such as arrest reports, body worn cameras, and 911 calls. What Detroit has today, what Detroit currently has is a 45-day waiting period to release videos. This is part of the continued lack of transparency designed to mislead the public. Far too often, the context describes, the video footage comes only from the police department, with the narrator providing justification for officers' actions masked as public education. What Detroit deserves, an ordinance that strikes a balance on three fronts. First front is the public in obtaining timely access to video and audio recording. Secondly, individuals who are subject to the police action. And third, the investigative agencies. This draft ordinance that we propose encompasses incidences where DPD members have employed use of force that has or could have reasonably resulted in death or bodily harm, even if no allegation of misconduct is made. This ordinance applies to all unredacted video and audio recordings related to an incident and all reports related to the incident. Any information covered by this ordinance shall be released to the public in no more than seven days from the date of the incident. Reasonable request to delay release of this information cannot exceed 30 calendar days. This ordinance requires the city to create and maintain a public accessible website or portable similar to Chicago for posting information covered by this ordinance. Such website shall be controlled and managed by the Board of Police Commissioners as the oversight and transparency body. This draft ordinance includes provisions for notification of affected parties, an ongoing review of the process, and provisions for redaction where required by law. Some may ask why an ordinance? We don't need more policies and procedures from bad actors to ignore without consequences. Ordnances are law in the city of Detroit. This matter is much too serious to be entrusted to a broken draft, recommendations, and approval. Call to action. It is time for transparency. Take up this approved release ordinance. Budget, BOPC, with the security of sufficiency.
Thank you, sir. Thank you so much. Thank you. You would certainly take a look at the proposal that has been provided to us today.
Do all of you have the written proposal?
We all have it up here. Yep, thank you so much.
Council President has ensured that I can come back in formal session.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. All right, so we do have 10 individuals who have raised their hand in the space here today, right now. And our first up is Mr. Pat Driscoll. You will have two minutes. Just asking everyone to keep your eye on... You will have two minutes, just asking everyone to keep your eyes on the clock, because I do have to be fair and give everyone the same amount of time. The floor is yours, sir. Good evening.
Thank you, Councilpeople. I just wanted to support this proposal that was just put before and elaborate a little on a specific case. Sherman Butler, on July 12th, he was killed in his apartment during the process of an eviction by a bailiff, shot multiple times, shot multiple times, twice, you know. The report, only, no, nothing was released, no body cam information was released. The only thing, as he said, was released by the police themselves, which portrayed him actually as a hero. Now, we might remember that Mr. Gregory, the officer, was left the police force under shady conditions, in the Fourth Precinct, actually, back around 2000. That this gentleman, that this gentleman is still working on the police force because we don't have this information. All we have is that he was required to shoot this gentleman multiple times, and then shoot him again several more times. But this is outrageous, a person is involved in an eviction. This group, the person is a hired thug for slum lords. Urban communities, the people that had to be taken over by the courts have fourteen buildings in the Palmer Park area and are a slum lord. And now, they hire this person, and even ten days afterwards, he was still on the job. And part of the reason is because we don't have an ordinance such as that. Part of the reason is because we aren't looking into what our bailiffs are doing. They have the right, the judge has the right, according to their appointment thing, it says that creates for the court, as determined by the court, in its sole and complete discretion and unfavorable impression on the public mind, to get rid of him. But because we have no footage, we have no basis, and we're stuck again waiting that he still is a threat.
Thank you so much.
Philadelphia, they took three cases, and they put the guy, and that they finally asked...
Thank you so much.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Bob Day. Bob Day. Again, advising everyone, please keep your eye on the clock. We have to be fair to everyone, same amount of time.
Bob Day, work with Detroit Eviction Defense Justice Coalition for Sherman Butler. Sherman Butler, a black tenant murdered by the police and a bailiff on July 12th, more than ninety days ago. The forty-five days is a lie. No information has been released. The police and the bailiff busted in his door. The police tased him, the bailiff shot him multiple times and killed him. Then they released information saying, no body cam, no autopsy, but they say Mr. Butler attacked them. We know Mr. Butler had just been released from the hospital. He'd had all the toes on one foot amputated. He couldn't stand on his own two feet. He probably didn't even know there was an eviction order or an eviction judgment. They busted in his door, they came in and killed him. We had to fight to get his name. We had to fight to get the name of the bailiff who killed him. They still won't give us the name of the cop who tased him and participated in the murder. So, they're using this racist displacement. This was an apartment building in Palmer Park, over a hundred units, only two people. Mr. Butler and one other tenant remained there. There was no emergency, there was no rush to get him out. He was just out of the hospital trying to survive. A little bit of commend decency, asking a few questions, he'd still be alive. Forty-five years old, shot dead like he was nothing. We need an ordinance that says immediate release. When the police attack, whether they kick somebody, hit somebody, use a car, shoot them, tase them, whatever, immediate release. We need that information out there. And Detroit is considered a backwater for not allowing this information to come out.
Thank you, Mr. Day. Our next speaker, our next resident, excuse me, is Courtney Hall. It's Courtney Hall.
Hi. In an October 3rd meeting...
Ms. Hall, can you pull down that mic just a little bit for us? There we go. We can hear you better.
In an October 3rd meeting, Chief White stated that he was gonna implement a policy that allowed for the public to have access to all audiovisual footage within forty-five days of any atrocity occurring when DPD is involved in any way. I didn't notice him offer a survey of any public opinion about this idea. I didn't notice whether or not his new policy is in compliance with the city charter, whether he consulted the police board, the mayor, or the city council about this. And even if we all were in agreement with this policy, we still do not have the body cam footage nor the autopsy results of Sherman Butler's death. And although it is not the matter of this council, we are also facing the same challenges with obtaining the body cam footage of John Zuck's murder, also in Wayne County. We see a pattern of withholding police audiovisual information happening all across this nation, and we need to change this in Wayne County. I understand that Chief White and Prosecutor Worthy want to gather all of the different forms of audiovisual data first with the intent of presenting all forms of footage to the public at once. But given the history of policing and our legal system in this nation, with its roots founded in the bowels of supremacy, there remains a trust issue, and the longer that they continue to hold out on the information that we are demanding, the more feelings of lack of trust continue to fester. So, my ask is that the city strongly consider the draft presented today by CPTA that will help govern the release of information by DPD in these types of circumstances, and will allow for the audiovisual release within seven days and not more than thirty of any police incident, thereby creating an avenue for the public to have a say in this process, as well as paving a path towards police transparency and accountability.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Our next speaker, Ms. Tara Brown.
Good evening, Council. My name is Tara Brown, and I want to read to you part of an email exchange between the Board of Police Commissioners and I, the Department of Justice, Chief White, and Grant Hoppe. This was written by Ricardo Moore, the Police Commissioner. According to the Detroit City Charter, the Detroit Police Department is submitted to the will of the people. From the information gathered regarding the Sherman Lee Butler shooting, the community has determined that this was an officer-involved shooting. Prosecutor Kim Worthy has not purchased any body worn cameras to aid in any investigations. It should be considered a privilege for the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office to use the City of Detroit taxpayer equipment to assist, and not a right nor reason for secrecy. There is no state or federal mandate for body worn cameras and should not, body worn cameras not to be shown in this situation regarding Sherman Butler. It is disingenuous to say the release of the body worn cameras will hamper an investigation. It won't. The Detroit Police Department, for years, had rape kits sitting on a shelf, and the prosecutor was still able to get convictions. No member of the department was held accountable for those, for the rape kit scandal. Institutional betrayal was the result. Public trust is paramount. Once the video of the shooting is released, whether sooner or later, the public will see why it was delayed from being shown, and this will further create erosion of public confidence in our department. Release the body worn cam footage in the interest of public trust and transparency. Every bit of information that's been shared with the public regarding Sherman Lee Butler was born out of the Justice Coalition for Sherman Butler, specifically me having to stay up all night and look for it. I am not a police officer. I am a citizen. We have not been able to get a police report. We have not been able to get a video. I have sent over twenty FOIAs regarding this matter, and every single one of them has been shot down. I know the name of police officers that were present. I got a pretty good idea after listening to the dispatch call what happened to Mr. Butler. And part of the reason I suspect that we are not getting his autopsy is because it sounds like, from the call, he was assaulted. DPD needs to be held accountable, and Chief White shouldn't be able to abandon this situation and go to a new job like nothing happened over here.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker, Mr. Adam Barrett. Adam Barrett.
Adam, Detroiters for Tax Justice. It's appropriate, I think, that we're meeting here. The homeless in Detroit are a living manifestation of our policy failures, and we should have to see them. To cater to the investor class while neglecting the working class and sweeping unhoused people away from downtown is a crime against humanity. There's a hundred and sixteen vacant homes in Detroit for every homeless person to say nothing of all the empty office space. Onto your new CRC report about tax incentives. The DEGC has some serious questions to answer. Does council have a timetable for when you're gonna be putting them on the hot seat regarding that? I don't think that they should be allowed to continue as if things are still business as usual around here. Council has the power to dissolve the DDA and force them to retire the bond debt that they've created for us. But I think that we should consider this to be odious debt, since it wasn't created by the working-class Detroiter, but by billionaires using our tax money for their own ends. We all paid our taxes, and we had every reason to think at the time that the money was going where intended. Why should the taxpayer be saddled with this debt? We always end up cleaning up after the rich. In fact, it's the same as ever. You see it every day downtown after the partiers leave. Black folks sweeping up trash, doing the dishes in the restaurants, cleaning the sheets in the hotels. When you talk about job creation to justify these tax breaks, this is what it means, from what I can tell, menial servant work. The skilled jobs are done by the white Trumpers from Brownstown. We all know that. Our economic model would collapse without a ready supply of unskilled black and brown folks on the verge of homelessness to do these servant jobs, which I think is why they keep tax capturing the schools. Anyway, Sherman Lee Butler was murdered for not wanting to be homeless.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Richard Noto.
Good evening, everybody. Segue a little out of that heavy stuff. First of all, I'd like to thank the council and everybody in the city that's helped Kathy Schneider and myself move forward in resurrecting Western Market from the 1967, it was taken down from the highways. Please help support us. We're looking for vendors. I'm also here, council knows, to talk about Corktown parking. Nothing's been done. The administration continues to sit on their, I don't know what, and why they have not come to us with a plan. They keep saying four more months, six more months, four... We need to have a city council session where we bring them in, what they plan on doing, and bring other people and the community leaders to come in and discuss what their plans are. I always come in with, if I have a problem, I always come with a solution. We have it. It's the Corktown Shuttle. We were not funded by M.D.O., probably because the city administration didn't support us. We got support from Council President Sheffield, Santiago, Councilmember Santiago Romero. We need to get things moving forward. The Corktown Shuttle's great. Move people around between the parking spots in Corktown. It's easy. Now, there's a thousand people now moving into Michigan Central. Where they gonna park? Bagley Hubs, about thirteen hundred. Where they gonna park? Why don't we have a solution? Why do we need, every time this happens, we have Avenue Fashion. Finally, the Avenue Fashion is coming back, and they can use a Corktown Shuttle, too. Why do we have to be at Busch Park? Why does everything have to get to crisis? Why can't we solve these patients and move forward? They keep kicking the can down and down the road. And the biggest problem was, they spent one, three million dollars for a shuttle for Michigan Central, and Dan Gilbert, to move people from Michigan Central to his properties. And none of that shuttle has anything to do with helping the people in Corktown. I wish we can have a session in the city council.
Thank you so much.
Proton.
Member Santiago Romero.
Thank you. Just briefly, thank you, Richard, for the advocacy that you do around parking. Just wanted to share with you and everyone else that is interested in more discussion around parking in the Corktown Neighborhood Association meeting. This month on the 24th is going to meet with MPD, PDD, and the administration to talk about parking in Corktown, so please do attend that meeting on the 24th to hear about what they're gonna work on parking in Corktown. Thank you, PT.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ms. Ethelyn Carroll.
Good evening, Council. My name is Ethelyn Carroll, President of United Block Club Council. In August, President Mary Sheffield came to one of our regular block club meetings at Tyreman and Northfield at Arca Deliverance. We had several problems, but the main problem is the church is, has been trying to purchase five lots from the land bank since 2018. We've become a partner twice. We paid the taxes twice. The lot, the park is gonna be no bigger than this gym. One of the lots that we finally got a price for after four years is about thirty feet by sixty feet. It's very small. Ms. Gabriella has seen it, Mrs. Torres has seen it, the President Sheffield has seen it. It's a cement park. It's a cement lot. And the land bank wants to charge us $12,000. So, our ask is, and we've been going back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. We finally got it reduced to $7,000. The church doesn't have that kind of money. Who has that kind of money? It's just gonna be a pocket park, not Caesar's Palace. So, the ask is, can we get the lots at the neighborhood price? It's just impossible to have that kind of money. And we've been going back and forth and back and forth and getting nothing. The pain that the land bank inflicts on the community is, I know you've heard it before, so I'll get there.
Thank you. Now, quick question, ma'am. What district is it located in? District Six, so I'm sure Member Santiago Romero's team's gonna be working with you.
Yes. We're...
Good. Member Santiago Romero?
Thank you, PT, and thank you, Ms. Carroll. I encourage everyone to come down to share with the rest of my colleagues what we're working on, but yes, that is something that we're working with the administration on. But, you know, we have an MOU. Can we look at having sales for nonprofits for block clubs at a reasonable rate for folks, something that we all should ask for while we're having a discussion? Thank you, PT.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Ronald Foster. Come on down.
Good evening. First thing I want to just really say is I appreciate City Council really taking the time to be a sample for community engagement. I think that it's very important. The community cannot grow without community engagement, without community meetings. I did want to take time to holler at Miss Santiago Romero. I think that she's done a really good job within her craft, where she went to school for, which is social work. Just real quick, social worker, assesses needs, build relations, advocate council. I think she's been doing a very, very good job of that. I think City Council's been doing a really good job of transforming the city. But with that being said, I don't think anyone take a shower and put on dirty clothes. So, as this transformation goes on, I think that it's time that we change and start to put on good clothes and to promote and advocate for the community. One of the things I personally would like for our community to advocate for is in our medical facilities. There's a rise in sexual assaults amongst our most vulnerable people in medical facilities, and those things need to be addressed. Those employees and doctors need to be vetted. It's no longer the community can just trust people in positions of authority when those positions of authority has been breached. We are asking that public trust be restored on all fronts. I'm asking for precinct delegates, not just precinct delegates in good communities, but precinct delegates in within our impoverished communities. They have a voice. They have a right to be, play a role within our democratic process. I'm not here to bash anybody, but I always come down to speak about how we can do better. And I think personally, we could do better with a new commissioner. And so, I, Ronald Foster, have written in today to run for county commissioner within District Two, requesting debates, showing my work within these communities, that every engagement, and I ask for support, and I ask that you all continue to support our city council, which have been doing a great job as a legislative branch. Thank you.
Thank you. Media Services, if you can come and lift that mic up, because it dropped down a bit. Thank you so much. As he makes his way, Mr. Ismail Ismail Noor. I apologize if I mispronounced your name, sir. He's gonna adjust that mic for you a little bit.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ismail Noor, and I am here to support and demand justice for Sherman Butler and ask for the release of the body cam and autopsy... and ask for the release of the body cam and autopsy reports. And I believe that there is no justification, none whatsoever, to have somebody killed because he was under an eviction order. We, as residents of this country, we should work together in order to stop arming the Zionist entity in Palestine and killing people there with our own tax monies. This tax money should be spent in here for such cases like Butler, who did not have enough to support himself. My people have been evicted under gun by force by the Zionist entity, and I was a victim myself. In 1967, they evicted us under the gun from my own town to outside Palestine. And I have been here for a quarter of a century in this county and more than half a century in Michigan. So I know what the system is. I know that the White House is responsible for all of that killing in the Middle East, in Palestine and Lebanon. Long live Palestine, free, free Palestine, and thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker and final speaker in person is Ms. Ruby Riley.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This morning, I called in the city council and I asked a question. Other people asked questions, they said they want answers, and I would like to have this answered today. In January, for our community health corps, there was funds there before January. It was said, we sent letters that they don't have the funds. If I'm not mistaken, in June, before you all went on vacation, money was allocated back to that. I would like to have everything that was supposed to have been done for me and whoever else to be done. Number one, my car was supposed to have been fixed. My car is down, my transmission is down. They did pay my auto insurance. That's the only thing they did, because they said that they ran out of money. Okay, I need to know what the money that's supposed to came in June. I was watching, I'd be watching y'all all the time. And the money was approved. Where's the rest of the funds that's supposed to be done for me for the washer, the dryer, the stove, the bedroom? Can y'all explain to me? I mean, you asked people this morning, can you answer me this evening? No answer from nobody?
So I was going to let you finish, but I don't have, I don't have that information for you.
So anyway, another thing is, I had made a statement this morning. I said, for these police that be in these ways where people shooting everything, I said, get a drone to go over there first and then back them up. See what I'm saying? Instead of letting police officers get shot, which everybody didn't know was a crisis. So that's one of the things. Another one was, who was it? I was about to draw on the house. I guess that's just about it. But I would like to know about the community health corps for the people that was approved for it.
Ms. Riley, what district do you live in?
Three.
Okay. Maybe someone from Member Benson's team can assist.
We are familiar with Ms. Riley and we will contact her and work on this issue.
All right, thank you.
Because I need my project.
Thank you so much. We'll now go to our online callers. Now, how many callers do we have?
Good evening, we have ten callers online. Our first caller is phone number ending in one six nine.
Caller ending in one six nine, the floor is yours. You have two minutes, please keep your eye on the clock. The floor is yours.
Hello, can everybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Hello, everybody. Thank you for continuously praying for Brother Cunningham. Thank you, council president, for riding the buses. Thank you, councilman Durhall, for giving out pizza at the Rosa Parks Transit Center and riding the buses with Brother Cunningham. Thank you, councilwoman Waters, for donating the six cases of hand warmers. I've seen all of this on Brother Cunningham's Facebook page, and I also get all the information for these meetings from Brother Cunningham's Facebook page. Brother Cunningham is still looking to repair his outreach vehicle and purchase more bus tickets and gloves. Cunningham is doing a lot better since he got released from the hospital last weekend. Also, I'd like to add that there should not be a rent increase for people on social security benefits. The social security benefits only increase once every year, and that increase does not exceed the rent increase for every year. They already have limited funds, have needs and necessities, have to pay utilities. And with everything else increases, increasing, there is no room for want. Checks should be increased a lot more and rent should be decreased a lot lower. Can we change this? Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Our next caller, please.
Next caller is Yvonne Jones.
Yvonne Jones, the floor is yours. You have two minutes, general public comment.
Hello, this is Yvonne Jones. And I'm a lifetime Detroit-er, a resident of District Five. I'm also an active member of the Coalition for Police Transparency and Accountability. I'm here to support the passing of the ordinance for releasing body worn videos in a timely, consistent manner. I'm also asking and demanding the release of the body worn footage for Sherman Lee Butler's murder. We need transparency and accountability from our police department. We desperately, desperately need a new model of public safety. It is the, policing is our largest line item in our budget with no positive results. We need to begin to spend the money, the allocation of over four hundred million dollars a year, on real public safety, on addressing the real issues in this city. We talk about homelessness. We talk about lack of good transportation. There are so many things that we can move some of this money to, to make our residents safer and to also demand accountability and transparency from the people who are supposedly keeping our citizens safe. So we need, just as a minimum, to have this ordinance passed for consistent, timely releasing of body worn footage and to hold the people accountable for the murder of Sherman Lee Butler. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Caller is Mandy Lee.
Mandy Lee, the floor is yours. You have two minutes. Clock's coming up, there you go, two minutes, general public comment. Mandy Lee, are you there?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm here to speak about the case involving Sherman Butler, who is a man recovering from surgery and killed by a bailiff during an eviction at Palmer Complex alongside the assistance of cops. The body cam footage hasn't been released. It's not even to his family, and it's been ninety-five days. The community demands that this footage be released in accordance to the police department's own policy of releasing footage after forty-five days. The family deserves to know how he was killed, and the bailiff and cop involved should not only be jobless, but also prosecuted for fatal recklessness at minimum. I think it's incredibly sad that we have to come to city council meetings to beg for the bare minimum of transparency. It's very dehumanizing for the family, and I don't know how they could ever move on without knowing how he died. You need to do everything you can to create transparency and trust with your constituents, and releasing the body cam footage is only the first step towards that, but I hope you can figure that out quickly for his family. Yeah, that's the end of my statement. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Next caller is call in user one.
Call in user one, the floor is yours. You have two minutes, general public comment.
Can I be heard?
Yes.
Good evening, council pro tem Kate. Thank you, council member Ramirez, for having this town hall meeting. I'd like to bring two items that I'd like for pro tem Kate Romero, Ramirez, I'm sorry, and Johnson and Callaway to assist as well as Benson. As you know, anytime members of the public bring complaints about landlords and show pictures and videos, why is building and safety inspectors going and telling? Who is telling? How many times we contact any of you all so that we now have to face retaliation and being bullied? And this has been happening to me, my aunt, and my cousins, and I have video and audio to prove it, and nothing is being done. Member Kate, I've been asking Member Sheffield for over one year and two months about this light pole that's at the Valero Gas Station on Lindwood and West Graham Boulevard that the bulb has not been put in. It needs to be extra lighting so that our kids coming from Northwestern High School can be safe other than just brushing me off. And I'll continue asking until this bulb is pulled up, put in. Also, at the Rosa Parks Transit Center, you are denied the right to use the bathroom. It does not have any salt. You are told that you can't even come in the inside and wait for the Dexter bus that guaranteed is skipping hours continuously. Bus seats are nasty and filthy, and every time you try to make a.
Thank you, Ms. Shea. We will continue to work with you. Please feel free to call our office and we'll work on additional assistance as best as possible from our perspective. Thank you again. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Vicki.
Vicki, thank you for calling. You have two minutes, general public comment.
Good evening, honorable city council. Thank you for this time to speak today. My name is Victoria Camille. I'm a District Seven resident and a member of CPTA and the former secretary to the Board of Police Commissioners. I'm demanding the release of the body worn camera footage from the murder of Sherman Lee Butler, that officer on seeing used force. Please adopt the video release ordinance that was presented to you today by CPTA. City council and the BOPC should consult with Chicago's Civilian Office of Police Accountability without the noise from DPD and Corporation Council. This idea that releasing video routinely puts investigations at risk and taints jury pools is false. The truth is the truth. Isn't that what we want to prevail in a court case? Or do we want continued false convictions, dangerous officers back on the streets, and victims left with no recourse? The videos that DPD currently releases on YouTube are edited and narrated to help the viewer form a certain opinion. This practice brainwashes the jury pool and is wholly unethical. The videos have to be released, released unnarrated and as unredacted as possible so people can form their own opinions. Take this ordinance seriously. Chicago's version has been touted as a best practice for years at the National Association for Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement, or NACOL, at their conferences. Detroit has a lot of catching up to do with police accountability and transparency. Start with passing this ordinance. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Betty A. Varner.
Ms. Betty A. Varner, the floor is yours. You have two minutes, general public comment.
Good evening, my name is Betty A. Varner. I'm a lifelong resident of the city of Detroit. I'm here advocating this evening, trying to get information out to help seniors to be able to stay in their homes. If you, I have found out since my health has changed and I have mobility problems, serious walking problems, and I know I'm not the only one in this city that could use this help. If you're not eligible for Medicaid, there are different organizations that has wonderful services. But if you're not eligible for Medicaid, you cannot get help so that you can be able to stay in your home at peace and be safe. Detroit Area Agency on Aging, DAAA, they have a program called My Choice Waiver. It's a government grant program that is set up to help seniors to be able to stay in their homes and not be in nursing homes. And the wonderful thing about this program is it allows you to have a higher income and be eligible for Medicaid. And this My Choice Waiver, they do almost whatever they can do to help you be in your home and get the assistance that you need to keep you out of nursing homes. The number is three one three four four six forty four forty four. Again, three one three four four six forty four forty four. If you don't need this service, spread the word, your neighbors, your family. We need to get the word out. There are seniors who can use this help. I'm receiving help, so I'm talking about what I know. Thank you for this time, and the council, I appreciate you.
Thank you as well. Next caller, please.
Next caller is phone number ending in five three four.
Caller ending in five three four, the floor is yours. You have two minutes, general public comment. Caller, are you there? Is Yvonne?
Yes.
There she is.
May I be heard?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. You know, there are certain areas of this city, it sounds like, I'm not sure, parking studies have been done. I thought I saw money on the agenda, and a lot of money has gone to a company called ACOM, including they got a lot of ARPA funds. I think there's questionable ARPA spending, American Rescue Plan Act money, like the six point nine million dollars going to the Fisher Body Loss Program for the, of the four hundred and thirty-three units, sixty-three, that are supposed to be affordable. That comes to over a hundred and nine thousand dollars subsidy per affordable unit. For one of the developers is that, one of the, on the board of the Detroit Land Bank Authority, Richard Hosey, and on the board of the Housing Commission. And I would urge this body to make sure, how about money getting to smaller people who may have had more difficulty during all of COVID? I thought that was, you know, part of what that was supposed to be. You know, in terms of getting body cam footage, I asked for body cam footage of police arriving on the scene after I got hit by a car. They're asking me for almost four hundred dollars to get it. Why? Also, please put land bank Zoom tapes up on Channel Ten or one of the city channels, like the city planning commission meetings are not timely put up, but I would say they could come up more quickly to be of use for the public who can't meet. Those are the meetings, whether they're in the day or the night. And I would like to ask members Tate and Member Johnson, which committee, city council committees have jurisdiction over the Board of Zoning Appeals rules of procedure? Because I would urge this body to seriously take a look at those, because there was a judge, a court order that that body had to hold hearings consistent with due process, including giving the residents more time to.
Thank you so much.
Our next caller is Stephen Haring.
Mr. Stephen Haring.
Can I be heard?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. So yeah, I agree with the first, earlier callers about the transit and, you know, really how, you know, we really need to push to get a higher budget, not only push the administration, but push MDOT, the state legislators. Because as I mentioned in other council meetings, you know, we have like a two billion dollar transit fund that's currently on hold. Because of course, one Democrat or so-called Democrat from Downriver, is playing some games with his agenda. But, you know, transit is very important towards the growth of the city, and, you know, we really need to look into it. I also want to say, currently over by Grand Circus, over by the statue of the penguin statue and this liquor store over in the Five Five, there is just us, I mean, it is just horrible with homeless people, drug addicts, you know. It's just that whole entire, and, you know, even, you know, it's just really the whole park and of Grand Circus, you know, I really think. I really think we need to start looking at finding a way to place these homeless people somewhere humane and somewhere where they can't really bother other people and, because, you know, we're not as bad as California, thank God, but, you know, if you go over by Grand Circus and, you know, Central United Methodist Church is, I mean, it's a cesspool, just surrounding it is just homeless people, you know, sleeping, drug addicts, you know, it's just really, and it's really disappointing that, you know, at church, you know, they let...
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Next caller is Clarissa Grimes.
Ms. Clarissa Grimes, the floor is yours. You have two minutes, general public comment.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you so much. My name's Clarissa Grimes. I'm a Detroit resident. I'm in District Six. I just wanted to advocate for the, the Sherman Butler stuff that everyone has been talking about tonight, and the draft proposal. I'd really encourage you to consider that. I'm definitely in favor of it. And in the meantime, just because we do not have this ordinance yet, that doesn't mean that you can't do everything in your power to, right now, do everything that you can to release the body cam footage, release the autopsies, release the names of the officers who are involved, and ensure that they are disciplined. Our city murdered someone, our tax dollars murdered someone, and the fact that people have to fight those charges to get it not to be a cover up is ridiculous. So I would encourage you all to support this ordinance and to do everything you can to obtain justice for Sherman Butler. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Our final caller is Ann and Kevin.
Ann and Kevin, the floor is, oh, let's get that clock to two minutes. Floor is yours, you have two minutes, general public comment.
Can I get a what-up, though?
Hey.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Yeah, can I get a what-up, though? Hey, hello, I'd like to introduce myself, Kevin, and my girlfriend, Ann. We're new homeowners here in District Six, in this great district. Thank you all for hearing us today. I would like to echo a lot of the points made by these community members. Thanks for being here. And I really wanted to introduce the status of Twentieth Street, this corridor I pass by all the time and see the signage for Detroit City Football Club, future stadium being built here. And at the same time, I think that we need to notice that we can definitely increase the status of the thoroughfare for this corridor as part of the Plan Detroit, City Planning Commission update to the master plan. This can have a decades impact, and by, by increasing the thoroughfare status, I'm not sure how to describe that, higher density of upzoning, this would allow us to build bigger. And I think this is a really important corridor, you know, for me as a cyclist, I take this to get to the St. Anne Church, and there's just beautiful views there of the Ambassador Bridge and riverfronts. I think this is a gateway to downtown Detroit. I just want to make that more noticed for that decades-long impact it can do for the master plan currently, as well as, I think it's important for us to realize that the DTE should not be increasing our fees in order to improve a lot of this infrastructure we have around us. Now, I'm a new homeowner, and I want to recognize that we're improving this local area in District Six, you know, doing a lot of work here, and we could have got a lot more information from the city as far as how to best do that. And I think we can improve language justice, and I also want to echo that the budget should not include this...
Thank you so much. And that takes us to the end of our public comment. Before we wrap up, I know that Member Waters indicated that she had a few words.
Well, thank you. And, and the reason is, Mr. Chairman, is that there was such an outcry this evening for Sherman Butler, and I just want to thank everyone for coming out to, to express their concerns. I do agree, we need to have transparency and accountability in our police department as well. So I am going to tomorrow write a letter to Chief White and ask that he release the body cam footage. I believe it's the right thing to do. But thanks so much to everyone for coming out and for calling in on behalf of Sherman Butler. Boy, that was really good. Thank you.
If there's nothing else from colleagues prior to our closer, I don't see any hands. Our closer will be, Member Santiago Romero will be the last words you hear.
Thank you, Pro Tem. I appreciate this, and if the media team wouldn't mind going to the slide with our events, that's where I want to end for today. We've got a lot of things coming up, so thank you all so much for being here. I really appreciate the work that you do with us, being here, holding this accountable, advocating for the things that you want. Just want to encourage you to continue to build with us. Take a picture of the screen for our next series of trainings, of community events, and our annual movie nights is coming up. We're going to watch Puss in Boots at Senate Theater on Michigan Avenue, so come with us, to organize with us, come learn with us about the budget, and come have some fun with us as well. Thank you all so much. Thank you, Pro Tem.
Thank you. Everyone be safe and be well. Colleagues, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Seeing objections, that action shall be taken. This meeting is adjourned.